The Hollenbeck Police Station had a very special surprise visit during Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Dodgers player Freddie Freeman and his family dropped by to hang out, take pictures, and sign autographs as part of the Dodgers Love L.A. Community Tour. Let's take a look.
Today is the first day of the Dodgers Love L.A. Community Tour, and specifically, we are here at the Hollenbeck Police Station to thank our LAPD officers for their service. And we are kicking the week off with Freddie Freeman. Freddie Freeman is here to say thank you to our officers. He's giving some autographs, taking some pictures. He's a big fan of them, the way they're a big fan of us. And it's just a way and a week of celebrating our fans around Los Angeles.
Well, we're all very excited about Freddie getting the Dodger organization stopping by, and especially on this day where it's Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, making it a very special day for the community and for Dodgers and for the police department.
I want to thank the Dodger organization. Their community engagement for this entire week are demonstrating that it's not only what they do on the field as well as what they do off the field. So I owe me on behalf of LAPD, thank you for including us.
Thank you, guys, for having me. This is awesome. My family and I love, love L.A. So far, it's been five months, 12 years in Atlanta, so we're looking forward to the next six years. So this is, this is a special time for the Freeman family, and thank you for having us.
This event is very important to me because I'm a Dodger fan. I like the Dodgers, and this has been a great opportunity to meet one of the great players that baseball has to offer at this time. So right now, I was able to get this custom-made bat signed by Freddie Freeman, and it's going to be placed in a very special place, either in my office or at home.
We share a great relationship with the LAPD, and we're happy to be here and to thank them, and we're part of this community together.
The only thing I would like to say is, "Go Dodgers! Let's get another World Series."
The City Hall and LAX pylons turned purple to observe August 31st as International Overdose Awareness Day. The goal is to stop overdoses and end the stigma around them so that resources are available, including conversations and help for those grieving loved ones who've been affected.
In America, every five and a half minutes, somebody is dying from overdose. It's August 31st, which is International Overdose Awareness Day, and I'm wearing purple because tonight, City Hall will be illuminated purple, as will the LAX iconic pylons. Whether you come from the wealthiest neighborhoods or from the homeless communities, overdose is rampant, and it's growing every day. It's getting worse. The purpose of Overdose Awareness Day is to first, end overdose; second, to end the stigma, make the awareness out there so that the conversations and the resources are available; and finally, it's to support friends and family who have grief and grief in their life, and to help them help themselves and to help others in the pain that may never go away.
I lost my 19-year-old son Tyler in 2018. He ingested fentanyl in the bathroom of a sober living. And after he died, we knew that we wanted to do something to try to prevent other families from going through this. So we decided to start a foundation, and we originally did awareness walks and things like that and tried to support grieving family members. But now, so many people are dying from fentanyl overdoses that there's not so much of a stigma.
This is the third year in a row we've lit up City Hall and the iconic LAX pylons purple to bring awareness to overdose, that it's not just August 31st, it's year-round, that there are resources, and that you're not alone.
My best advice to someone who has lost a loved one to overdose is, we have to talk about it. People should not feel embarrassed. It's no one's fault. It's a disease. Addiction is a disease. And the only way that we're going to stop it is to talk about it. And the more we talk about it, the more lives we save.
Have you ever wondered why L.A. streets have the name they have? So did Mark Tapio Keitz, and his curiosity has led him to begin researching the fascinating history behind each L.A. street name. In this week's feature story, we'll learn some fascinating facts, including why Los Angeles doesn't have a 13th street. Check it out.
We're standing at the junction of Hayes Drive and Commodore Slope Drive here in Carthay Circle. And I chose this junction for our background because all the streets in Carthay Circle were named in 1922 after notable 19th-century Californians. So Hayes Drive is for Benjamin Hayes. He was a judge. His most famous case was probably the Biddy Mason case, in which he ruled in favor of Biddy Mason, who had escaped slavery and wanted to legally set down her freedom. 12 years ago, in 2010, I was hired as a writer for a freelance project. There was an HBO drama called Tremé. So what I was hired to do was to write about New Orleanian things. So I wrote about a lot of New Orleans streets and how they got their names. And I thought, you know, I should do this for Los Angeles. It's kind of a cool idea. And it took about 10 years for me to finally get around to it, but that was the basic inspiration. I started in May 2020, so it was kind of a lockdown project, but I knew it was going to be a lot bigger than just something to work on for a couple months. Every street is interesting in its own way. There are basically two types of street naming conventions. It's either a city ordinance, in which case civil engineers choose the name for a street, and that often happens because there will be duplicate street names. The other style of street name comes from tract owners themselves, and so they often have very personal value to these people. Either they named it after themselves, or a loved one, or their home city, or home state, or home country. If I had to choose one street that had the most history, it would be Pico Boulevard. Pio Pico, of course, was the last Mexican governor of California, so he had that stature. In fact, he and his brother Andres owned essentially the entire San Fernando Valley at some point. They received him as Mexican soldiers. And he sold his half, the southern half of the valley, to a fellow named Isaac Lankersham in order to build his hotel. So Pico House, which was Pico's hotel, still stands outside the old plaza. His street, it started as Pico Street. It was one of the oldest streets in the city. And interestingly, when they started numbering streets in Los Angeles, they went from first, second, third, to 12th, and then they stopped at 12th, and then they laid out Pico Streets. So Los Angeles never had an unlucky 13th street. That was obviously intentional. They didn't want to have unlucky 13th, so they chose Pico. I've set up a contact page on LASTreetNames.com. I hope that people will start contacting me with information that I may not have about some random streets that were maybe named for a grandparent or that they just happen to know something about that only a resident would know. One thing that I've been really struggling to find is photographs of the old namesakes from a lot of these streets. And so I'm hoping that when people contact me, that there might be somebody who might have some family photos, and that they might be able to say, "Oh, you're looking for so-and-so street? Well, so-and-so was my great-grandmother, and here's a photo of her." And that would be just very special, because you can't just find these things on the internet that easily.
Enjoy an afternoon of music with the Artisan Guitar Ensemble. Join the Discover and Go program and save on museum tickets, or attend the El Grito 2022 Mexican Independence Day event. All this up next on Things to Do.
Attention guitar music lovers in L.A. The Artisan Guitar Ensemble will bring an afternoon of music from around the world to the Donald Bruce Kaufman Brentwood Branch Library. Composed of Max Mendoza, Andrei Giraldo, and Daniel Ramirez, this classical guitar trio formed while studying music at CSU Fullerton. They will bring their over 10 years of shared ensemble experience to this occasion. People from all ages are welcome to attend this free performance taking place at the Donald Bruce Kaufman Brentwood Branch Library on Saturday, September 17th at 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. If you love visiting local museums and different cultural destinations while sticking to a budget, you may be interested in Discover and Go, the ongoing partnership between the Los Angeles Public Library and local cultural institutions. Discover and Go is a program that offers free and low-cost passes for local museums, science centers, zoos, and theaters. Attractions include the recently opened Academy Museum, the Broad, and the Grammy Museum, among many others. This program is open to Los Angeles residents 18 and over with a physical L.A. Public Library card in good standing and is ongoing. For more information and to reserve a Discover and Go pass, visit lapl.org/exploreLA. Often referred to as El Grito, Mexican Independence Day is celebrated not just in Mexico, but also in our country. L.A. is holding a special event this year for everyone, and it's called, you guessed it, El Grito 2022. Join this community event celebrating the 212th anniversary of the independence of Mexico, as well as 200 years of diplomatic relations between the U.S. and Mexico. There'll be live performances by Graciela Beltran and Luna La Grande with the Mariachi Los Aventureros. El Grito 2022 is a free community event open to the public, which will take place at the Los Angeles City Hall at Grand Park on Thursday, September 15th at 7:00 p.m. For more information about the event, you can call 213-473-7001. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 13. I'm Nury Martinez, the president of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, absent. Bonin, absent. Buscaino, absent. Sadio, absent. De Leon, absent. Haristassen.
President.
Hutt.
Here.
Corretz.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Here.
Ramon.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
10 members present in a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 6, 2022.
Ms. Hutt moves, and Mr. Lee seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Price seconds next. Madam President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute. Mr. Lee, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
If you please rise, put your right hand over your heart, face our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Madam Clerk, just go ahead and run through the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. There is a request to hold Item 10 on the desk for a technical amendment and to send Item Number 2 to the Public Works Committee.
Okay, without objection.
Items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 6 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee reports for Items 8 and 9 have been submitted and posted to those respective council files. Items 10 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Those items are now before us. Members, you wish to call any of these items special? Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, Madam President. For Item 3, I'd like to call, to move to amend the item to approve the PCN application. Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read the findings.
Item Number 3, Mr. City Attorney.
All right, so here is the, the motion. One, this regards Item 3, as Ms. Rodriguez just said. One, determine that the issuance of a liquor license at S.T. Market, located at 7240 Foothill Boulevard, Tohanga, California, 9142, will serve the public convenience or necessity and will not tend to create a law enforcement problem. Two, grant the application for determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption at 420, excuse me, 7240 Foothill Boulevard, Tohanga, California. And three, instruct the city clerk to transmit the determination to the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control as required findings under Business and Profession Code Section 23958.4, presented by Councilwoman Rodriguez and seconded by, I believe it's Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lee, you're second on that? Thank you. Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call Item 10 special for an amendment.
Okay, do you have that ready to read into the record? Does the City Attorney do it?
I have it.
The City Attorney has it?
Yes. So it's a, it's a technical amendment, and it provides, "I move that Item 10 on today's agenda, related to providing funding for extended pool hours at Pan Pacific Park, be amended to transfer $4,464 to Fund Number 302, Department 88, APPR Number 001070, which is salaries as needed, and $540 to Fund Number 302, Department Number 88, APPR Number 001010, salaries general, for a total amount of $5,004 from the General City Purposes Fund Number 100-56, Account Number 0705, Council District 5, Community Services." So it's the same total dollar amount. It just shifts which accounts it's coming from or going to.
Can I, I will be the second on that. Members, are there any other specials? Seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, which are the available items for us to vote on?
Thank you, Madam President. There are cards on Items 13 and 16 through 20. Item 2 has been referred back to committee. The council may now vote on Items 1, 4 through 5, 6 through 9, 11 through 12, 14 through 15, and 21 through 23.
Just go ahead and prepare to vote on those items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 10 ayes. Mr. Lee, I believe you have some special guests you'd like to introduce before we take public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Madam President, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to introduce you and to all my colleagues here today. Today, I'd like to welcome a few special guests that we have who've traveled nearly 6,000 miles from Busan, Korea, to visit here in the City of Angels. The group is here to continue strengthening the relationship between Los Angeles and Busan, which has been a sister city since 1971. And on this trip specifically, they are here to create opportunities for Korean and American students to connect and establish partnerships between our local schools and theirs. Please allow me to welcome the mayor of the Jeongju District in Busan, Mayor Jin Bang Choi, and his delegation of colleagues, Woo Ji Jong, So He Park, and Su Ji Jong, if you four would stand up. And in addition today, we are also welcoming the leadership of the Nam Sung Foundation. This is an organization that has been working to connect students on a global level and expose them to different cultures, ideas, and teachings. The principal, let's see, let's see. I'd like to allow me to welcome the chairman of the Nam Sung Foundation, Chairman Cheong Chung Ak Choi. I'd like to allow me to welcome the Chairman of the Nam Sung Foundation, Chairman Cheong Chung Ak Choi, the Principal of Nam Sung Elementary School, In Suk Sun, and the Directors, who each focus on a different critical role for the school and foundation, Ken Taehun Kim, Se Young Ji, and Wong Ju Kim. If you'd kindly give them a round of applause. It is my honor to welcome you to the City of Los Angeles and we wish you well in your journeys and travels. And Madam President, they are officially presenting you with a proclamation, an MOU, to secure a education relationship with the City of Los Angeles. If you don't mind taking a look at that at some point. And I appreciate all of you for being here today. Thank you so much for visiting us here in the City Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Thank you to our guests and welcome to the City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take public comment. If I call your name, please come on up. Dr. Truth Bay?
Madam President, if I may, the ordinances for items 6 and 7 will be held over one week to Tuesday, September 20th, unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, without objection, thank you. Dr. Truth Bay, you're going to speak on items 13, 16 through 20, and your general public comment.
Hi, good morning. I'm just going to speak on 10 and public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so the staffing for, oh, good morning, by the way. The staffing from Corretz and Rodriguez for Pan Pacific Park. I wanted to address also, right next to it, the Fairfax Library located on 161 South Gardner Street. Due to lack of funding, around 1:30, the library abruptly closed. Lot of seniors were there, veterans were there, and they said due to lack of staffing. So Jessica Hudson, if she's aware that if you have hours from 9 to 5 and you just suddenly close within 10 minutes, not allowing people to finish their work, and then you have people asking for water to the water fountain, it was just a hot mess. So if you're going to staff for Pan Pacific Park in the pool, you need to staff for the library as well. Right, so I want you to adjourn your meeting, Marquis, in honor of Rakim Hashim Allen, also known as PNB Rock, who was executed in Roscoe's Chicken and Waffles on Manchester and Main. You guys created a war zone. Were these the same guns that were stolen from Karen Bass's house? We don't need her to be mayor. As you see my shirt, we supporting Rick Caruso because he has tons and tons and tons of housing. He's down to earth and he cares. So homeless people, if you're black and you need an opportunity, don't fall for the blackface of Karen Bass. She needs to stay in her congressional position. How dare you take that position and try to become mayor when you guys are not even connected to Garcetti? The council's not connected to Garcetti, which is what I found out last week. It's atrocious, the way that we are getting governed, Rick Caruso for mayor. We don't need Karen Bass, they need to stay in her congressional seat. The people have spoken. So if you want to call us miserable and have gun-
Thank you, Speaker. The next speaker is Andrew Grapener. Andrew, you signed up to speak in general public comment.
All right, um, let's see. Several council members don't even seem to be here today. So last, I was going to speak on this last week, but you came up with an excuse to cut me off early, so I wasn't able to speak on it. But last week, prior to the start of the City Council meeting, I encountered two LAPD officers who were standing in the chamber speaking negatively about people who come here to give public comment. They were speaking about, you know, people they've kicked out and, you know, things like that. And the second they realized they were caught, they all, they both ran away in opposite directions. So I don't know, so they were obviously scared and they knew what they were doing was wrong. They're, they're trying to intimidate public commoners is they don't want us to come and give our opinion. So, yeah.
The next speaker is Justice Justice. Anyone hear with that name? Justice Justice. Anyone hear with that name? Next speaker is Bianca Rowe. Bianca? You signed up to speak on item number 2?
Yes.
Yeah, that item's been continued. City Clerk, what, what, what day has that been continued to?
Thank you, the item was referred back to the Public Works Committee.
It's been referred to the Public Works Committee now, but you can go ahead and speak on item number 2 and your general public comment.
Thank you so much. Am I able to submit documents for distribution to the council members, please?
Hold on for just a second. Can you get a little closer to the mic so we can hear you and hand your paperwork to the sergeant? He'll make sure we get it.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. The reason I'm here today is I am the applicant for item number 2. The item was emailed to me that it was going to be postponed or sent back to Public Works. The reason that I was given notification was there was a great deal of public movement generated about this particular item. It's important for me as a member of the community to highlight the fact that the, a few members of our community have disingenuously portrayed this movement and falsified information to our local community members, that this is a land giveaway to developers. As the applicant, I'd like to make a point of noting, we are community members. I've lived at the property for 20 years. There is a second applicant. The family are four generations and they've also lived at the property for about 90 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, there are, there are no other speakers on the queue. So at this time, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. We now have 12 members here, so why don't we go ahead and reconsider items 6 and 7? Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Who are those items are now before us? Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item number 3, as amended by Ms. Rodriguez. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on number 10, as amended by Mr. Corretz. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Item 13, item 16, and items 17 through 20. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Madam Clerk, where are we now?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President, members. During the early hours of Sunday morning, a fast-moving fire ripped through a longtime pillar of our South LA community, Victory Baptist Church, located in CD9. I want Pastor Edward Jenkins and the entire congregation to remember that out of the ashes, Victory Baptist Church will rise again and be assured that our team will be right by your side during this time of need. As the LA Fire Department arson investigators gather findings, my office will help to coordinate a task force made up of city departments to identify possible resources and services that may be available to help them rebuild. In addition, I'm going to be securing a $50,000 discretionary grant to disperse to the Victory Community Foundation to jumpstart these recovery efforts. The deep roots of the church carries great personal and historical significance for our neighborhoods. During the 60s, civil rights leaders, including Dr. Martin Luther King, visited the church, and over the years, it has continued to be a source of hope, inspiration, and strength. During this dark hour, we will do our best to deliver the same care and compassion to Victory Baptist Church as they have done for our neighbors for more than seven decades, throughout their many programs, including weekly food distributions, holiday giveaways, youth development programs, and more. I will express my gratitude to the incredible members of our fire department for their bravery and heroic actions and sending a special prayer for the three firefighters that were injured during the blaze. Your sacrifice to Angelino's, day in and day out, is without question honorable, and we thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Members, are there any other announcements? Mr. De Leon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, we all know that last week was a hellaciously hot week for so many of our vulnerable residents in the great city of Los Angeles. But one thing I do want to highlight and point out, and we did witness a lot of the headlines from the LA Times or the news media on television, both broadcast as well as cable, how potentially there will be rolling blackouts throughout the state of California. Thankfully, there was no rolling blackouts in the great city of Los Angeles. And I think at times, the fear was folks would conflate, especially the media, would conflate what is happening elsewhere in the state, especially in Northern California, with the city of Los Angeles. Being the largest city in the United States of America, I do want to recognize LADWP and the fine work of all the men and women who work at LADWP, because during the extreme weather patterns of last week, again, a hellaciously hot week for so many folks, we only had really 3,000 customers out of 1,000, out of 1 million, 1.5 million customers who had outages. And that's very different when folks are overloading the transformers as opposed to what a rolling blackout is. And that's because with LADWP, we have a vertical integrated system with our assets, our own energy assets that belong to us and the people of the city of LA, which is remarkably different from any other investor-owned utility in this case, an IOU. Unfortunately, the reality is also too, is LADWP is much maligned as well too, with many folks in the city of Los Angeles, for whatever branding purposes. Folks here know better than I do, you know, the reasons why, even though they actually pay a lot less in the city of LA than they do with Southern California Edison, Pacific Gas and Electric, or Sanio Gas and Electric, the three major investor-owned utilities. But I just wanted to give a heads up and recognize, you know, Marty Adams at LADWP for their strong work. Again, when you have a block or two that you have no power, it's very different when you have overloaded transformers in comparison to rolling blackouts. In fact, to put this in context of how great work they did last week, LADWP actually sold electrons to Cal ISO. So we have plenty in storage and we actually sold and we helped other parts of the state of California who potentially were going to go through rolling blackouts. So I just want to, you know, during always difficult moments, and again, an institution that has been much maligned, sometimes for, you know, for the right reasons and sometimes actually for the wrong reasons, right? I just want to stand up, Madam President, and just recognize Marty Adams and the hard-working women of LADWP.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, the Fernando Awards in the San Fernando Valley is one of the most prestigious awards given out once a year to one individual. And I want to just say congratulations to Jane Skeeter, whose work at the Boys and Girls Club of the West Valley was this year's recipient, and also a CD12 resident. We were very proud when she won the award and I just want to take this time to acknowledge her. And also, colleagues, if you, you weren't here last week. I know some of us enjoyed Squid Game, director and producer and actors coming to City Hall. Unfortunately, we were not meeting on that day, but I just want to say congratulations to our friends. The director, Huang Dong Hyuk, and of course, the leading actor, Lee Jung Jae, for their portrayal in what has now become a global phenomenon in the TV show Squid Games and their incredible performance that won them the Emmys this week. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. And John, thank you for recognizing Jane too. Great lady, done a lot of great work in the San Fernando Valley. But I wanted to just join you, Mr. De Leon, in your recognition of not just the Department of Water and Power, but also to give gratitude to our Department of Recreation and Parks as well as our library department. They were providing critical relief from the heat for our families, for our seniors, particularly in the San Fernando Valley, but everywhere that the, it was just, it was scorching hot. And they provided critical relief, they always do. And so I also want to just add my gratitude and thanks to the hard-working men and women of our library department and recreation and parks for their great work. They always show up when we're, when, in our emergency circumstances and so I'm just really grateful for them. But kudos to the entire city family. So thank you, Mr. De Leon.
Mr. O'Farrell?
No, no need, thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell, you don't have an announcement? Can the clerk tell, tell me how many more minutes you have? There's, they need, do you need additional 10 minutes? Can I get a time from the clerks? They're still circulating. They need five minutes, members. Any other announcements? We have El Grito, Mr. Sadio, and you are our honorary padrino this year. Can you please talk about that?
Just in the most casual, unaccustomed, as I am to public speaking, I want to invite everybody to El Grito, which is the Call for Mexican Independence, this Thursday at City Hall, a public event. Graciela Betran, a star amongst many families here in Southern California and Los Angeles County, will be performing. And many dignitaries, including the mayor from the great city of Walahada, will be here with us. Of course, our great mayor and others, many others will be joining us for that celebration. It's a tradition here at City Hall. And so I'd like to welcome all the members here to join us for that historic occasion. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Ms. Rodriguez.
Any other announcements, members? Can we all rise for adjourned motions? Mr. De Leon, you having a adjourned motion?
Madam President. The colleagues, I rise to adjourn in memory of Benkamin Seja, who was a longtime resident of Boyle Heights, an active member of Our Lady of Talpa Church. He was born on June 22, 1951, in the town of Penjamo, Guanajuato, El Bajillo, Mexico, and immigrated to the US in 1968 at the age of 17. That was during the Mexican Olympics in Mexico City. He immigrated at the age of 17 with a dream of finding a better life for his young family. He found work as a short cook order, order, short-order cook, I should say, before beginning a career as a truck driver, delivering and assembling furniture throughout greater Los Angeles region. After many, many years of hard work, Benkamin retired and dedicated his life to his family, his church, becoming the best grandfather he could be to his 16 grandchildren. And by all accounts, he was. In May of 2022, early this year, Benkamin celebrated 54 years. That's over half a century of marriage to Maria Elena Seja, who was at his side from the first time they met at the time of his passing, to the time of his passing. Together, they raised nine children, five girls and four boys, including our very own Ben Seja, who is the administrative, the Assistant City Administrative Officer for the City of Los Angeles. Benkamin was known for his sense of humor, for his love of music, and extraordinary generosity, in particular when family and friends needed a place to stay for a night, a month, or even longer. Things to Benkamin, families were able to set roots and find balance as they pursued the same dream he had when he first came to the US. Benkamin died just a few weeks ago, on September 2, in 2022, in City 14 of natural causes at LA County USC Medical Center. And what was so nice is the family wanted me to convey also too that he was treated by a very dedicated team of doctors and nurses and specialists for the better part of the last seven months.
of the last seven months. He is survived, of course, by his wife, Maria Elena, all of his nine children and their spouses, 16 grandchildren, six siblings. He will be missed, but remembered by all, in particular, his extended family of in-laws, his cousins, primos y primas, nieces, sobrinas y sobrinas, nephews, godchildren, and everyone fortunate enough to have had Ben Camin in their life. Again, this is the father of our very own Assistant City Administrative Officer for the city of LA, Ben Ceja himself, or, you know, I would say, Ben Junior, Ben Camin Junior. So, may Ben Camin Ceja rest in peace, and to the family of Ben Ceja, our very own from the family of LA, and to all of their greater family, our deepest condolences, nuestro mas profundo pésame. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in his memory and all member adjournments, and our condolences to Ben Ceja from the entire city family. Thank you. Any other adjourned motions on my left? Adjourned motions to my right? Can I get it from the city clerk's office that you guys need more time or are we good to adjourn? I think they're running through, three more motions. Hold on for just a sec. Okay, looks like they got them all in. So, seeing no other adjourned motions, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.